On at 6:00 PM this meeting. Tronic devices are turned off. Not even sure if that's true. And technology where it doesn't really matter, but it is what it is. I'm not changing the line. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting as such, each application will include a presentation from city staff followed by a question and answer session between staff and. Can't present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward one at a time, clearly state your name and address for the record and sign the sign in sheet at the podium. The first item on our agenda tonight is item 2021-519. This is zoning request is E21014. This item is to be tabled until December 13th. Do I have a motion to table this item? Got a motion, Mr. Seagraves, second. All in favor, please vote. Item is tabled 6-0. All right, the next item on our agenda is 2021-518. This is zoning request Z21-015. The applicant has requested this item be tabled to the December 13th, 2021 planning and zoning meeting. Do I have a motion? I have a motion, Mrs. Straga. I'm going to second Mr. Rice. Please vote. Look how fast we move when we are all clocked in. Well done. All right. The next item on our agenda is zoning request, item 2021-134. This is zoning request Z21-006. This is to allow for rezoning from NS to RDA conditional for the development of 12 single family homes at a density of 5.9 units per acre. There's 2.03 acres in land lot 700. This is Atlanta Road and Campbell Road. Morgan Capital Development is the applicant. Mr. Staub's the background, please.
Good evening, Joey Staub. Zoning case Z21-006. Your recommendation will go to Mayor and Council on December 20th. Subject property is located at the intersection of Atlanta Road and Campbell Road, a little over two acres.
Mr. Staub's. Can everybody hear him? Okay, I'm having a little trouble there. I'm staring at.
I'll speak as loud as I can.
Thank you, buddy.
It's a vacant lot connected to the new church property. They are proposing 12 single family detached residences. The current zoning is neighborhood shopping. So the proposed zoning rezoning is RDA conditional. The future land use is neighborhood activity center. With the rezoning, it would have the land use changed to medium density residential. It is adjacent to Campbell Middle School, which is public institutional. To the east side of it is low density residential. The south, the church property is neighborhood activity center. And across Atlanta Road, it's medium high density and medium density residential. I'm going to go over the proposed site plan. Again, they're proposing 12 single family detached units. Originally, they were proposing 23 townhomes at a density of about 11, 11.5 units per acre. So they've reduced it to 12 at 5.9 units per acre. It will have the proposed setbacks, a front 20 feet, side five with 10 feet between structures and a rear setback of 10 feet. Lots one through six will face Campbell Road with rear entry garages. And lots seven through 12 will face the detention area with also rear entry garages. They'll have sidewalk around the development. And it will have two private roads. The main road coming in is 24 feet wide and then the road connecting to the houses is 26 feet wide. They are going to use the detention facility installed by the church, but they will increase the size of it. They're also going to make it an amenity feature and I'll go over that a little bit later. There would be a 50 foot landscape buffer between the property and Argyle Estates. The amenity area with the detention pond will have walking trails and landscaping. That will make it a more usable area. And the sidewalk connection from the development that'll go to the church. They're requesting five variances for the development. The front setback reduction from 25 feet to 20 feet, rear setback reduction from 30 feet to 10 feet. Increase in impervious coverage from 45% to 58%. Reduce minimum lot width from 7260 square feet to 3150 square feet. And reduce minimum lot width from 50 feet to 35 feet. Staff supports those variances. This is example of the fronts of the homes. And pictures of the subject property as it is today. And adjacent properties. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from NS to RDA conditional for the development of 12 single family detached homes at a density of 5.9 units per acre. We have the following conditions, the standard conditions regarding the architecture of the home, protective covenants on the lots, 200 square feet of common space per lot. Regulations about the detention pond, utilities underground, and they're responsible for any traffic improvements. Strip of brick pavers at the entrance. The streets will have to conform with city standards. And they will comply with the city's tree ordinance. Special conditions are regarding the setbacks as previously stated. A 14 regarding the minimum floor area of 1800 square feet. They will be larger than that, but that's the minimum. Minimum lot size of 3150 square feet. Impervious coverage shall be 58% per lot. Minimum lot width is 35 feet. 18 regarding the width of the private drives. If right away dedication is required on Campbell Road, we are, there's a stipulation for that. 20, the front elevations as stated, one through six will face Campbell Road, seven through 12 will face the detention area. They will have rear entry garages and fencing is prohibited within the development except four foot, four foot fence, decorative fence of four feet in height. 23, the front entrance cannot be gated. 24, 10 foot landscape strip along Atlanta Road. 25, 50 foot landscape buffer along the northern boundary. 26, they're responsible for all the sidewalk improvements. 28, they're responsible for sidewalk and landscaping in the amenity area. 29, they're responsible for the installation of the private roads within the development and connection to the church. 30, they're responsible for again sidewalk and road connections between the property and the church. 31 is a minimum churning radius for non, for non emergency commercial vehicles. 32 required, they're required to, they're responsible for any water and sanitary sewer improvements. 33, any fire access improvements. 34 regarding tree disturbance. 35 and 36 ties it to the site plan previously mentioned and the elevations submitted with the application. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Staub's? Mr. Phillips?
One question, clarifying the 50 foot buffer with a six foot berm. My understanding on the berm is it's actually on the, in between the detention pond and the residences, not between the houses and the residences. The reason being is that existing tree cover, I think the residents enjoyed as they were.
Sure.
Whether or not that could be just, just to have that on the record that the berm is in the next vacant piece between the detention pond and the.
We'll let the applicant clarify that, but I believe that's true.
So if I understand that correctly, that on the site plan that's in front of us where you see the, the tree buffer, that's going to be slid down to the detention pond, is that what we're saying?
I think the.
The, the, the tree buffer, the existing trees and bamboo that grow there presently do an adequate job of screening. The problem is right beyond that in the area that showed clear that's to the, to the right behind the detention pond, that is wide open right now. And that's the area that needs to be screened.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Staub's, well done. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the plan. And if you could, address that last question. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore, welcome. Think that'll help? Thank you. I was wondering whether I was on or not. It's hard to tell. Thank you. This has been around for a good while and there's a good reason for that. When this was initially submitted, it was submitted as a proposal for 23 townhomes at this intersection of Campbell and Atlanta Road on just over two acres. But since that time, we have worked very diligently with some of the surrounding community, neighbors, residents, as well as city staff to evolve that project concept forward as well as working with very, very well and cooperating with the church, Covenant United Methodist that is going in and being built right now on the adjacent five acre tract. The culmination of all of that has now produced a plan that's in front of you and that is to revise the category from RM 12 to RDA for 12 single family detached homes as you see before you. These homes will be in the 600 to 700,000 dollar range. This is going to be a very nice development of homes at this intersection. Importantly, for your consideration, this property is currently zoned neighborhood shopping or NS and has been forever. The two acre site as NS is available for commercial development and that includes such uses such as fast food restaurant with drive-throughs. In particular here, it's important for consideration because of the traffic considerations. What has been discussed before and some of you who may have been here several years ago, there was an application for a medical office building at this intersection and it drew tremendous opposition from Argyle Estates and some of the residential areas on Campbell Road because of the traffic considerations. Where this road, what you see is the private road that comes out onto Campbell Road that serves both, both the church parcel and this parcel would have provided the primary access or the access for any development here. And the traffic considerations of having a high traffic count type of use for this property were viewed very negatively by the surrounding community and residents because it's located directly across the street from Campbell Middle School. So you have some school traffic that conflicts as well as the signalized intersection at Campbell and Atlanta Road. We though think that 12 homes as such as we're proposing really puts in front of you something that has minimal traffic and trip generation as opposed to nearly any other use, certainly any use that's been proposed or any use that could be developed here under its existing zoning, which it would need to be done if, if this proposal does not go forward. So that's kind of some of the general considerations for you in terms of why this and why now as far as this proposed 12, 12 home development. A couple of other questions that I'll answer for you that'll kind of feed into the question that was asked. When the church proposal was initially made, it had to come through for rezoning as well. That five acres was rezoned several years ago as part of that overall plan for this total seven acre tract that was owned by the, at the time by a single owner. Two things, two things that importantly came about. Number one was that access road that comes in off of Campbell Road that would be shared by both any future use of this two acres and the church as part of that. In addition, what was agreed to was the 50 foot buffer that stretched along the entire church rear against Argyle Estates as well as this property. So that was intentional from day one as far as when the church approval and development came through. As, as, as asked, there is a agreement with adjoining residents for where it is bare now. That's the church's development and they will be put in the landscaping and the berm and the trees along that section, which is their property and that part of their development. For our portion of that 50 foot buffer, we're certainly willing to keep the addition, the existing trees and, and whatever is there bamboo and trees that provide an excellent visual barrier, there's no reason for us to disturb that. That private road or drive or access road that comes in off of Campbell, you know, was going in and so on the other side of that, there's no reason to disturb that to put in a berm and new trees if the existing vegetation provides adequate screening. It's for the benefit of the Argyle Estates residents and those residents that live there. And if it's providing more than adequate screening now, we would propose to keep that in place and perhaps that can be a, would be a change in the conditions recommended by staff, but that could be worked out at community development and staff during plan review if that accommodation was made as part of any recommendation for that to be determined at the time whether adequate screening exists with the existing vegetation. Also, the second important part of that proposal with the church that was earlier approved several years ago is the shared detention pond, which is called stormwater management on your, on your screen. And that was the other part of working and cooperating with the church as far as having a development here. You only have a seven acre total site. We felt it was important, city staff felt it was important, the church leaders, leadership felt it was important to cooperate so that there was some sort of consistency. It didn't, it doesn't have to look like a church next to a small residential development. Why not make it where it blends, where it can look attractive and, and part of each other's planning efforts as far as landscaping and things go. But importantly, the very plan approved by the church and ultimately developed by them included the detention pond that was to be shared as a stormwater management facility by whatever went in on the two acres. So it was intentional that it was going to be shared and there's easements to that effect that went into place when the church bought the property. The idea that Morgan Development, Morgan Capital and Development came up with along with city staff was, well, why not take advantage of that? And we worked with the church to develop a plan where we're going to install the landscaping around the detention facility, create the walking paths and connectivity so that you turn what is just simply a detention pond that was shared, turn it into an amenity, a kind of a park-like effect where it's fully landscaped and treated as such so that it's not only an amenity for the future residents here, but it's amenity for churchgoers as well. It's a place to walk over and have a minute of peace or what have you. With that as well, always it had been planned for, you see along Atlanta Road, there is the main interest to the church, which is a right in, right out. And then this access that was to go through this parcel as well, that we will be constructing to provide full connectivity, though that access will be restricted on the bottom side to residents and emergency vehicles as opposed to full access to provide, we want to discourage cut through traffic obviously through, through this development. Those are some of the development features that hopefully answer some of the questions that you may have. As far as the specific residential development, as Mr. Staub's explained, these homes are rear loaded garages. That's intentional as well. We feel like this is very important to create a streetscape around the entirety of it. It's at a major intersection, so it's going to be seen. Our thought process was to create a small park and arbor and community gathering space at the corner, fully, that could be fully landscaped and have good trees and screening there against the busy intersection, but create a, a park-like setting there as well. The homes will face outwards, those will be front facing so that what you saw on the elevations faces out towards Campbell Street and then out towards the church. So when you drive by and around, you're not seeing the, the snub ends of the garages. What you're seeing is the fronts of the, of the homes themselves, which we create, think creates a really nice effect and a, and a super place to live as far as that goes. Again, what we're able to provide with this is yes, there's no real backyards for homes like this, but that's not the type of living or residence that want to live here. And instead, what we've created is things where they don't have to maintain it, but they have the advantage of having not only a corner park with a community gathering structure and component to it, but also walking paths in another park-like setting that's much more expansive on the adjacent church property, which will be shared with the church in that regard. With that, again, we believe this request of rezoning, now that we've come this far and made these types of changes to incorporate all the comments that we have, have had to date with the only change we would recommend based on, on the question to staff's recommendations and staff's recommended stipulations is to allow some flexibility for that buffer, the 50 foot buffer adjacent to Argyle Estates, that if it needs to be undisturbed to provide better screening, that we can do that. And so we're not hung up on that come at plan review. Other than that one comment, we are in agreement with all of staff's recommendations and their recommended conditions and respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the mayor and city council. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, a couple of questions really. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the site plan here.
Sure.
What is the, there's in the diagram there across the road that the private road, it's got this little crosshatch there.
Right.
Is this, is this gated there or not?
It's not gated there. That, that's, the crosshatch is a pedestrian crosswalk.
That's all that is?
That's all that cross that is.
Okay, so, so do you have a plan on what you're going to do about fencing around it?
The fencing would be, you'll have fencing that'll be decorative fencing along the fronts. The fronts of the homes with the sidewalks that go out to the sidewalk that'll be on Campbell.
Like metal fencing?
It'll have four foot tall decorative fencing just to have a, you know, a good look and kind of create, create a visual barrier between the fronts of the homes and the street. But beyond that, it will not be a, it will not be wholly enclosed or fenced. There will be some elements of decorative fencing for the park at the corner as well. And that's the real, the real fencing plan at this point.
Okay. All right, the other question I had, who's the architect of record?
The engineer. We don't have an architect.
Whoever's doing the design of the thing.
Doing the plan or the, or the architecture of the homes. There's just two.
Architecture of the homes.
Right now, that would be, it would be Caldwell Klein, Roger Caldwell, Caldwell Klein, which is a long time Cobb County architectural and design firm. Sure, thank you for those questions. Any other questions? Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, again, just to reiterate, saying the thing of preserving the existing trees in the 50 foot buffer, that material and so forth, my understanding is it would be placed on the church property. So you're still providing a buffer. It's just in the place, as you said, there's a hole in the, in the existing vegetation.
Right, that's part of the church's requirements is to fully landscape that, that area where the, where you're calling the hole in the, in the visual barrier. That's correct. That's part of their plans and part of the zoning conditions for their development.
Okay.
Any other questions? So if I understand it correctly, Mr. Moore, the, the gap that we see on our site plan here is the church's responsibility. And the one thing that you're asking for flexibility is on not landscaping the buffer that is pictured here, leaving the existing vegetation. Is that clear? Is that correct? Yes, that would be the flexibility we'd like to have and I thought it was a good point that was raised. As part of our plan was to landscape it because that's part of what needs to occur to create that visual buffer. Right. But if there's a, there's no reason to take a good one down. All right, yeah. And then, so then the next question would be, how does that buffer get managed? And I'm sure that Mr. Martin probably has an answer for that. Like that's going to be part of the certificate of occupancy for the church, that that buffer would actually be installed? Correct. And then like, while I am a huge fan of leaving the natural buffer, what's that going to look like when you have a natural buffer that's been there for however long, probably as old as Mr. Moore? Maybe older, maybe older.
Maybe.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Didn't mean to.
I'll talk about this for you guys. Basically on the church property, behind the actual church parking area in the building, it's pretty much natural buffer right now, but they do have 15 feet from the parking area. They will plant evergreens and all that to supplement that buffer because right now they're deciduous trees, so, and they're 60 feet tall. So they don't provide any real screening, but they do provide shade and everything else. So they're supplementing that buffer with some evergreen screening in front of that so it blocks the parking area. The area directly behind the detention pond, it was actually a kudzu field. So there was, there was just kudzu. There was no trees, there was no, no underbrush or anything. And you couldn't see it from Atlanta Road or from Campbell, but it was a big, big area back there. They, the church is currently in the process, they had a ton of topsoil. They stockpiled it. We've gone back to the neighborhood and said, this area that was a kudzu field, it was a low depression. So we asked them, can we, can the church come back in and build that area up to build a berm? They're loading that area up right now. They, they've got half the soil in, they're waiting to get their water lines in. And once they get their water lines in, they'll finish with the rest of the, the compaction and everything else. But that will be ultimately, there'll be a berm that'll be four feet above that roadway back there. So then they'll supplement that with landscape plantings with evergreen trees and overstory trees along that buffer.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Phillips, that answers your question. Good. Thanks, Russ. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you. All right. At this time, this is a public hearing. We'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. We just asked that you come one at a time, state your name and address for the record and sign the sign in sheet at the podium.
I live at 3282 Lee Street. I just thought I'd. Some years ago, I actually did a plan for the church there and I think it changed since I did the plan. It's changed several times, but I'm in support of this. I think my kid went to the school there next door last year and my youngest will go there soon. And I think this type of development is in line with the traffic patterns and so forth there. It's a density that works well with the park between the church and the school. And it's kind of a nice step down between the church and the residential community there. So just wanted to say I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anybody else? Okay. Any further discussion on this item? To entertain a motion for item 2021-134, which is zoning request is Z21-006. I've got a motion. Mr. Smith, all in favor, please vote. I got it. Yeah. Your application's approved 6-0. Congrats and good luck with your project, gentlemen. The next item on our agenda is item 2021-134.
The next item on our agenda is item 2021-445. This is zoning request Z21-012. Says to allow for the rezoning from R15 to R8 for the development of two single-family homes at a density of 4.59 units per acre. This is a landlot 560. It's 0.435 acres, 1439 Walker Court. Joe Callahan is the applicant. Mr. Staub's the background, please.
Your recommendation tonight will actually go to mayor and council next week, November 15th. Subject property is on Walker Street, 0.435 acres. Currently one single-family structure on the lot. The applicant wants to subdivide it for two new single-family detached residences. Existing zoning is R15. The proposed zoning is R8. The future land use for the property is moderate-density residential. With the rezoning, it would require a land use change to medium-density residential, because it's at 4.59 units per acre, and the maximum for medium, for moderate-density residential is 4.50. Everything to the north, south, east, and west is moderate-density residential. This is the proposed site plan. Have two lots, 85, 90 square-foot lot and a 10,371 square-foot lot. Have the R8 setbacks, the front 25, side 5, and rear 25. They both will have front-entry garages and stormwater detention at the rear of the properties. There's no variances required, but it does require a land use change for the density at 4.59 units per acre. Here's some conceptual home elevations. Picture the subject property as it is today and adjacent properties. The staff recommends denial of the request because of the change to the comprehensive future, the future land use plan within the comprehensive plan, or to create a land use that is inconsistent with the surrounding properties. So again, we recommend denial.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Staub's? Okay. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about the plan.
I can't read it. It's so small. Okay, that's those two, and this is the other one right here.
Hi, again, I'm Sean Murphy, 3282 Lee Street. I'm here representing the applicant as the land planner for the project. I also have Rick Holb, his partner, is here tonight. Keep it short. First, can I ask staff, just to kind of qualify something? You said you don't support it. Can you explain specifically, is it just the density, right? It's the 4.5 versus 4.9 is the, is the main reason you don't support it, right? So basically, it's the definition of what is moderate versus medium def, density is the real reason they, they don't support it. And Joey, you said a second ago, I believe, that to the, all, all the way around us was moderate density, correct?
Correct.
This plan right here was, from what I can tell, and the plan submitted in 2007, is RAD conditional. This is the property immediately to our east. There are nine units on that piece of property. And if I can get this thing to bring up the second page. Joey, how do I go to the next page? Hit the, hit the tab button? Oh, there should be one more. That's the, I'm looking for the second page of the PDF. There was one that had text only. Scroll. Sorry, bear with us. So this is the recorded plat from that property, and you'll note up in this area, if I'm circling it, the units per acre right there, where the cursor is, is 4.8 units per acre. If I'm not mistaken, that's more than 4.5 units per acre. So my point is, is that there is already medium-density proposed in, in immediate, directly adjacent to our, our proposal here. So anyway, I'll just talk a little bit about that, the, the density, moderate density versus medium-density. It's, it's a planning feature that they, the, the staff or an elected official or a hired architect, a planner, comes up with a plan and decides what that number is somewhere. It's somewhat arbitrary. It's not like when you go from one city to the next and you look at planting densities in another city in the metro area, not everybody has the same standards. Everywhere you go, they're different. And when you really look at this neighborhood, the truth about this particular block of Williams Park, between Hawthorne and Spring Street and Matthews, within less than two blocks of this proposed development, there are over 100 lots that are this size. I'm going to pull this other image up here. Give me one second. So what, what we're talking about density is the reason that staff doesn't support it. The truth is, what the residents of Smyrna care about, they don't care about, most of them don't even know what moderate and medium-density is, right? What they do understand is whether you're building a lot that is substantially smaller and the house is substantially larger than what they have. No one wants you to come in next to their half-acre and build a bunch of quarter-acre lots. Nobody wants you to come in and build 50 giant townhomes right next to, you know, my half-acre lot. As a resident of Forest Hills, I know because people have tried. But here, i- if you look at this plant, look at this aerial shot from your planning, your GIS planning, I don't know how to make this thing move over. Joey, you want to help me again one more time? Just fill, I'll probably fill up the screen with that one for now. This, this is just a block, a couple of blocks here. The project that we're looking at is right here, where I've got the cursor right there. That's where it is. All those lots that have the little red circle on them, they're all around 8,500 square feet or considerably less. When you look at this development here, there's 4,000 and 5,000 square-foot lots. And you look at this development over here and here, there's many, many lots in the neighborhood where the size of the lot is actually substantially smaller than what we're proposing. And so what I'm saying is, at the end of the day, we're not actually proposing, proposing anything that would set a precedence that will hurt the neighborhood property values. We are proposing two lots that are right around 8,000 square feet and change, and the lots immediately to the right of us are substantially less than that. Yes, they include the, the street in their, in their density calculation. They include the common area. They include the detention pond. We don't have those things. We don't get to claim half of the public road in front of our development as part of our density either. So it's really not comparing apples to apples. The truth is, is that our proposal is for developing two lots that are pretty much the same size as about 100 other lots within, not the greater area of Smyrna, not Forest Hills or some other neighborhood, but right here in the, in, in half of, of Williams Park, there are 100 lots the same size of what we're proposing. So we aren't by any means, I don't believe, proposing anything that is, would be setting a precedence, which is generally what staff is trying to avoid and what I certainly understand. And I think they're unfortunately in a position here where because it doesn't agree with the future land use plan, they have to, to not support it. So we would ask tonight that, in lieu of the fact that my client and his development partner have developed, I don't know, 10 other homes in Smyrna in the last few years that have all been very well-received and very successful, including my former neighborhood, and, and helped transition that neighborhood to less renters and more owners, that you would approve our proposal tonight again, and with the understanding that even though the density and that the verbiage of the density, moderate, medium, really doesn't mean anything. The truth is, we're proposing lots the same size as what's already in the neighborhood. So with that, I just ask if you have any questions and ask for you to approve our request. Thank you.
Well done, Mr. Murphy. Any questions for the, Mr. Murphy? Mr. Billy?
I just want to. In Williams Park, and I, that four and a half units per acre has been a standard we've aspired to as a neighborhood for a long time, but obviously not always successfully. There's a lot of reasons for lots to be the size they are and the zoning to be where they are. Some of these places you've talked about, there was an old apartment building on it, so they really downsized it, even though it has some high-density, single-family homes on it now. So I, I think the thing, I just, I just didn't want to let those comments go, that they're kind of mischaracterizing to me some of the neighborhood aspects there that are very important to the people who live in that neighborhood.
Any other questions for the applicant, or comments for the applicant? Out of curiosity, what is the, what kind of square footage are we talking? That is the, the difference between?
Yeah, 400 square, 430 square feet. Yeah, I mean, they work with the adjoining properties to try to see if they could purchase enough land.
So that triangle there, was that, was that triangle originally purchased with the, the development previously from, from this parcel?
No, it was probably just part of the development and the way they drew the road in. That's the way that happened.
Yeah, but you know, it's kind of funny, that triangle right there on the edge. I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious. It's kind of, but the only concern I have with that is, are they, would they be like double-dipping on your, we're going to use this, we're going to use this for us and then?
Sean brought that up, and we went back and looked at the, at the zoning stipulations for that development and what they required for open space and their existing open spaces. They have more within the development. They had enough to meet the minimum requirement for open space.
Without the triangle.
And I felt that with the request coming back, that would be discussed at this point in council, in the planning and zoning board, to make a determination as to whether it's double-dipping or not. You know, had they, had the opportunity to buy that piece, I think it would have cleaned up the front along Walker Court, could have connected the sidewalk and had 100 extra linear feet of sidewalk that went further into the neighborhood than it currently does. But unfortunately, the, the city's comprehensive plan says that this area is moderate-density residential. As Keith pointed out, the moderate-density residential future land use was actually, in the early 2000s, was actually specifically made for Williams Park. It wasn't an arbitrary thing. The neighborhood came together and, and said, this is the density that we're settling on, and that's what we want. And that, that's when it got adopted into the comprehensive plan. But, you know, unfortunately, it, it's, it's in the middle of a neighborhood that is all moderate-density. And I don't have the, we measure on gross acreage, so sometimes you're going to have lots that are smaller. Sometimes you're going to have lots that are bigger, and they may have the same, they may have the same acreage. It just depends on whether that acreage is privately owned or within a community open space. So, you know, it, I think they're trying to meet the intent, and I think it, it works, but, you know, with the definition of what's moderate and what's medium, I can't support changing the land use in the middle of a moderate-density residential neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Martin. Mr. Cole?
Hi. You knew my name. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for remembering that. Yes, my name is Rick Cole. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Joe Callahan's partner. And we've built more than 10 homes in Smyrna. I think the number is up to 34 at this point. Rusty knows me pretty well. Joey knows me pretty well. And I feel like I've, I think I've been in front of you, this would be the seventh time, and every time I've walked out with full support of, of your, of your panel. And I think, I think it's safe to say, I, I believe the reason for that is, is I've never brought anything before you that's unreasonable, or, you know. For, for that reason, I guess, I wanted to get up here and just let you know that I have had numerous conversations with Rob Allen, who is the president of the Williams Park Neighborhood Civic Association, and he has voiced complete support in what we're doing. I've made it very clear to him exactly what we're building. I've let him know about the square footage on the property. I let him know that we're 400 feet short, and he has said he has no issue with that whatsoever, and he's hoping that we, we can move forward with this, because he's very familiar with this lot that we're trying to build on, and it doesn't really fit, I don't think, with, with what the neighborhood is trying to accomplish. So I guess that's really what I have.
Can you talk about the triangle piece? Have you tried to acquire that from the HOA?
Yes, we have. Yeah, I was in conversation with a gentleman named Boyd, who's the president of the HOA next door, and.
That's it?
Doing anything, that, you know, they've got a retention pond to the rear. Anything, anything along that, that border, I was, I mean, we were willing to pick up, you know, just all we needed is 400 feet. And initially, the conversations were positive, and then when it was put to a vote, HOA didn't vote in favor. So when you're dealing with an HOA, you know, what, what can I do? But we were willing, fully 100% willing to purchase that 400 feet if they're willing to sell it to us. And in the end, even though it started out, I think positively, they just decided not to do it for whatever reason, and I wasn't given an explanation, so.
That's unfortunate. Okay. All right, well, appreciate your explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. This is a public hearing. Well, first of all, let me stop for a second. Any, any questions for Mr. Cole?
I'm sorry, I stepped away.
That was on me, not you. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come forward now. State your name, address for the record. Sign the sign-in sheet at the podium and smile. Good evening and welcome.
Hello. I don't know how to sign in up here. My name is Garrett Plyler. Live at 1501 Walker Street, around the corner from this. There's a petition that's been signed by 17 residents of the neighborhood that do not want this rezoned. So we'd like to keep the ordinances in place and not go over the density that's stated. Further, the elevations don't appear to match what's going on along Walker Court and Walker Street. There are no other front-loading garages on that street. So we feel like it'd be out of character for that stretch of, stretch of the street.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, I mean, if they could put two houses there and have rear-loading garages, that would be agreeable to you?
I, I can't speak for the rest of the, the folks on the petition, but I know that when I rezoned my property on Walker Street from RAD conditional to R15, that was a condition back in 2007. And I believe that was the same condition on that parcel we're looking at here. With the exception of the two that are on Walker Street, all the rest of those have rear-loading garages.
Okay. All right, hold on. Can't, can't lose control here, Mr. Murphy. Okay, any other, any other comments, sir?
And I had a question about the detention that they proposed. It looks like it was piped into, it would be piped into.
I'll get that question answered for you.
I'm sorry?
I'll get that question answered for you. It's one of my questions as well.
What happens if the gutters get clogged? Because I live, I live downstream from this property.
It's a very real thing, those, those underground wells, I promise you. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much for coming, sir.
Thank, thank you for your time.
It's not at the podium. It's there. We just need your name, address, social security number, kidding, just DNA, whatever. Yeah, and Mr. Rice is going to be coming over later for the barbecue. Okay. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? Please come forward now. All right. Good evening and welcome, sir.
Good evening. I'm Augie Zygon. I live at 2749 Morris Circle with my dear partner, Kelly Dominguez, who will be up to address you after me. And if you need a copy of that petition, I've got one also. Good. Angela San Martine, who lives at 1429 Walker Court, right next door, was the one that canvassed the neighborhood and acquired the 17. and acquired the 17 signatures in opposition of the development. So, I come before you. And again, that was a great point that the gentleman brought up. When you looked at the variance sign in front of the property that had been up there for probably a couple, a petition for the variance for a couple of months, clear forward or clear explanation, it's like, okay, there's gonna be some type of development to the property. Single, single-family residence, that's currently there now. And then, lo and behold, a second sign comes up that talks about the amendment to the original, to the original change, I guess. And so, as a resident there, I, I didn't quite understand what this new process was going to be. So, listening to the discussion, I've, I've got a pretty good idea. What was very concerning was the thought that maybe there was going to be multiple homes, like townhouses, condominiums or whatever, in the sizable lot. But as, as discussion, it's gonna be the two homes. So, I would like to, to bring forward in opposition of putting another home there as a result of quality of life. We live right around the corner. And actually, the development right across the street from us with a new home by Joe Callahan did a great job. Single, single-family dwelling. Our street width is 20 feet, 3 inches. So, with all the contractors that have been there for the last three to four months, parking there, just trying to get out of the driveway was, was, was very difficult. But Joe and company did a great job trying to mitigate us getting out of our property. So, 20 feet, 3 inches. I went out and measured the street in front of the 1439 construction. And it is 14 feet, 6 inches. And the reason why I'm bringing these measurements up in, in reference to the quality of life...
What was the measurement?
14 feet, 6 inches.
The road in front of the house that they're proposing splitting into two lots?
Is 14 feet, 6 inches, the width of the asphalt. And the reason why I bring this up is, is the quality of life. I'm walking my little pooch the other day and I could hear a car coming along from the rear. And I always move to the side where the curb is. And a average-sized vehicle is six to seven feet wide. So, as I'm on the curb, the car drives by me at a reasonable speed and I could almost reach out and touch the car and scared the hell out of me. And I'm thinking, oh, my goodness, if that wasn't correct, it could be some serious injury. So, you're now gonna put a second home on that lot, which is gonna bring additional cars into that area. And there's, there's no sidewalks. So, I was out there today doing my measurements and I could provide a photo. There was a mom, because there's a lot of families in the area with small children. She's pushing her baby stroller with the little munchkin that was right alongside of her. And, and it was, it was a photo opportunity. Took the, took the photo, went and measured it. And she and her little child was seven, taking up seven feet, approximately seven feet of the, of the street. Well, you only have 14 feet, 6 inches there. You take up seven feet occupied by a pedestrian and you're just... So, I'm bringing forth in opposition, you throw more cars there, the, the question of, of safety for us walking in the neighborhood is of a concern.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right. Anybody else? You already got volunteered. Anybody else that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? Last call. All right. Real quick, Mr. Murphy, you wanna come back? We have two questions for you. One, we'll start with the easy one. As part of a subdivision, and correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I can't let him correct me, 'cause he'll, he'll do it just for fun. If they were to get approval for this subdivision and have two lots, they would tie into the existing sidewalk and continue another 100 feet, which would therefore mitigate some of this street issue? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the sidewalk would continue a little bit further now. It may again go into nowhere, but...
Right now, there's sidewalk from, basically, the, from Rosel Street all the way to this property along the north side of Walker Court. There's the gap of this property. And then, Wa, I think Walker Street Manners is the name of the subdivision. It can, the sidewalk continues there. So, with the subdivision of the land and the construction of the two homes, they'd be required to build the sidewalk and connect them. With, along with the right-of-way dedication and put that on, put that sidewalk in the public right-of-way. If it's a tear-down rebuild, they're not, they're not obligated to do that.
Right. So, if somebody said they wanted to come in and build a 6,000-square-foot house here, they would not have any obligation to, to put in a sidewalk? But if these guys were to get permission to build two houses and they're 400 feet short of what the zoning requires, they would be obligated to put in a sidewalk that would correct a lot of the street width problems? Is another question before I get to you, Mr. Murphy. Is, is there any plan to widen this street at any point in the near term?
I don't, I don't have that answer. I'll have to check with Public Works to see what capital improvements are planned for this area.
Gotcha. All right. And so, that answers my question. So, if you would just speak to the storm...
Yes, sir.
Whatever those things are.
We propose what's known in common terms as a dry well. It's, it'd be a large, I forget the exact depth without pulling up the plan, but probably four feet deep by 20 feet, by 10 feet. It's filled with gravel and wrapped with filter fabric. But to address the gentleman's concerns, there's a, in the, in the new details, there's an observation port. There's like a 10-inch pipe that's put down into the, into the gravel that the pipes off the house come into. So, you can open that up and clean out any, any debris that does get trapped. And then, you also do a first flush device at the actual downspouts if it's installed properly. I can't control what the builder builds, but that's what they're supposed to build is, as a first flush device that, that allows the leaves and stuff to go out. And of course, I usually recommend they do gutter covers when they're gonna have this type of system. But generally, that's what we do. We didn't meet the threshold for a full hydrology study here, which would make us build a complete detention pond and all that.
Gotcha. All right. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Murphy before we close, close this down for a motion? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Appreciate your, your time. I drive down this road at least every Friday. It is a very tight road. I'm gonna go measure it tomorrow. I think it's a hair bigger, but I'm gonna go measure it because that's how I am. 'Cause my truck, I guarantee you, is, I, I thought you were gonna be complaining about my mirror coming by at your shoulder earlier. I was afraid my, my tag number was gonna be on this picture that you gave us up here. But no, it is a tight little street. It's a great area. That's kind of the, the point of people coming and investing in the area 'cause it is a fantastic opportunity for investment for Mr. Cole, who does a fine job in our community and has for many, many years, as is Mr. Murphy. I'll be honest with you, I, I don't like seeing the threshold broken. But this is one of those applications that I'm personally torn on. 400 square feet seems minuscule when you're talking about what's next door. But fortunately for both the applicant and you guys, I don't get to vote. Maybe. I don't have a vote, but, but that is, that is my two cents for what it's worth. So, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
We have a motion, Mr. Bentley, to deny. Do we have a second? We have a second, Ms. Ostriga. Please vote in favor of or opposition to the application. Yeah, what did I say? I'm sorry. In favor of the motion to deny the application. My apologies to everybody in attendance. Yeah, let's, let's redo that. We have a motion to deny the application, Mr. Bentley. We have a second, Ms. Ostriga. I need everyone in, to vote on the denial in favor of or opposition to said denial. Woo. I guess you ask and you shall receive. I'm gonna vote in favor of the application. The motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
That one's probably gonna cost me a little political capital in the future. I do believe in these guys. They do good work. It's not anything against the neighborhood that I actually work in every day.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I voted in favor of the application to be approved, not in denial. Now, his motion to deny failed. He's right. Yeah. I did that incorrectly. We, we do need to do that. My apologies, guys. Yeah, 'cause you can't have a negative. Yes. All right. My apologies. We're gonna have to redo that motion, guys. We had a, a tie on a motion to deny the application. It was tied three to three. I voted in favor of the opposition to the denial, which is a three-four. So, that, that motion has failed. So, I need a motion to approve the application. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Smith? We have a second, Mr. Seagraves? I vote in favor of a yay for the application to approve. Sorry for the confusion for everybody.
Yeah, sorry. That's the first time that's happened in 15 years since I've been here, so...
It's the first time...
It was a learning experience for us all.
There have been a couple of applications that... been an issue. We thought it was gonna be an issue, it's never manifested itself. Until I brought it into existence. Truly, I deserve that. I deserve that so much. Dear Lord. Hey, it's on record now. All right. So, any, any further discussion? Stop it. Any further discussion? All right. We need to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, October 11th, 2021. Do we have a motion to approve? All right. That's, that's true. All right. The minutes, were they approved? All right. They are both in now. The minutes are approved 6-0. For the record, I do hope that they go back and can work out that 400 square feet. I think it's ridiculous based on that case, but that is my opinion. This meeting's adjourned at 7:05. I'm sorry.
I was gonna let you all know. Kaitlin will be back off, I'm returning to leave, so she'll be back at...
Awesome.
At your next meeting, so...
Great to hear.
I'm, I'm glad she'll, she's coming back. We need her help, so...
We do.
We'll see, we'll see her shortly.